I have to catch up. I hope everything's all right at home. Welcome to the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors' regular meeting for September the 22nd. All, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Carol, could you please make a note in the minutes? We had an executive session on a personnel and legal matter. Please, everybody, be aware that the meeting tonight is being audio recorded.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say, we also had an executive session on a personnel issue last night.
Oh, two nights in a row.
Yes.
Yes. Please make a note of that, Carol, last night as well. Thank you. First order of business is the receipt of the minutes for September 8th. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The next two items are receipt of invoice history, receipt of year-to-date budget report. I want to table those because I didn't have a chance to look at the data that came in today. So unless there's an objection, we're going to table those two. Next item on the agenda is the Resolution 2020-19, the Jansen parking lot. And we have Brian from CKS Engineering. Brian, could you fill us in?
Yeah, sure. We've done a form review. Essentially, the Jantons adding some additional parking lots, three sections, O, P, and Q. They are eliminating some temporary parking that was installed a couple of years ago. And this is just the land development for the parking for that project.
Brian, how many additional parking spots are there?
Let's see. The plan proposes 312 new parking spaces.
And I'm assuming that you've looked into the water runoff issues?
Of course, yeah.
Right. So there's no water runoff issues with that parking lot, is there?
They have all been addressed. That existing pond in the center of the property handles a lot of the flow rate out of the property. There's a couple additional rain gardens that were added to deal with water quality.
All right.
Brian, how many parking lots were on the temporary site?
I believe it's just one large temporary parking lot that's going to be removed.
I think you don't know the capacity. You knew the capacity of that.
I think I can jump in here, Mr. Brandt. This is Ken. There were approximately 140 parking spaces added with the temporary project that the board approved about a year ago.
Okay. Brian or Ken, the entrance and exit, is it off of McKean?
The construction entrance will be off of Welsh Road. That was a requirement in the planning commission's recommendation.
But Ken, I mean, when it's finished?
When it's finished, well, when it's finished, there will be an equal or somewhat equal distribution between McKean Road and Welsh Road. Most of the parking that's being added is over closer to McKean Road. But I think, you know, Chad has taken a look at it, and I think there'll be pretty close to an even distribution, depending upon which way people are arriving and which way they're leaving the site.
Well, that's good, as far as I'm concerned, because McKean really doesn't need additional traffic. And the more we can put on wash, which it can handle it, is satisfactory to me. But thank you for the updates so far and the answers.
You're welcome. That was one of the concerns of the planning commission, and that's why they suggested that all the construction traffic should come in off of Welsh.
Yeah. Okay.
So, Ken, I'm assuming that our neighbors in Jansen were pretty forthcoming, and as they've always been, there wasn't any issues, or were there?
No, there were not any issues. There were some lengthy discussions at the planning commission meeting relative to traffic patterns and what could be done in the future in order to mitigate some of the traffic on McKean Road. As I think the board's aware, J&amp;J has agreed to participate in the McKean Road study along with the Spring House Innovation Park and the township. And I believe that there will be a proposal before the board to try and begin that study sometime soon. But one of the other things that J&amp;J agreed to was to install a flashing beacon on McKean Road in the area toward wooded pond. That was the suggestion of the planning commission. J&amp;J agreed, of course, subject to approval of PennDOT and further study by the traffic engineers, but they agreed to assist with that. And that should make a big difference for pedestrian crossings on McKean Road.
So that's about 100 yards further down McKean from the entrance to the YMCA, is that correct?
That's correct.
63, about 100 yards.
That's correct. And that wasn't the only improvement that would be contemplated, but that was one that everyone was able to agree on at the planning commission meeting. Depending upon the results of the study, there may be another crossing further down closer to the Y entrance. And SHIP has already agreed to put a crossing down in their portion of McKean Road opposite Spring House Farm.
Right, right.
Ken?
Yes.
Ken, I hear you talking about all the businesses joining together to do a study on McKean Road to improve that. But I didn't hear the YMCA involved in that. Are they going to be included?
Well, they will be included. They have not yet agreed to participate financially, but they will be included, and we will be soliciting membership information from them to try and help us with the study as the study comes together.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, a couple of questions. Is the surface parking lot going to be permeable surface, permeable surface or hard asphalt?
Handered asphalt.
Okay, but we're sure that we're still meeting all the requirements of the runoff, so.
Yeah, we checked the stormwater requirements. The existing pond onsite is controlling the volume. There's some additional rain gardens that are added to address water quality from runoff from the new parking lots.
And are we losing any trees due to this new parking lot?
Yes.
We are losing some trees, but J&amp;J has agreed to replace every tree that comes down with a tree that meets our ordinance requirements. So there will be a tree for tree or a caliper inch per caliper inch replacement of all the trees that come down.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Are there any other comments from supervisors? I'll take that as a no. Oh, I have a question for Brian. This property, it's in the Shamady or Wizahickin basis? It's Shamady, correct? Shamady, okay. All right. Since there are no more questions on the board, I'd like to open this up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who has any questions or concerns about the parking lot at Jansen?
I'm not seeing any hands raised, nothing in the chat box, and nothing that contact us at this time.
Okay, well, I have a motion to accept the resolution for the permanent parking lot at Jansen.
Don't move.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Before we move away from that, I'd just like to make a comment about Jansen. They're one of our, I say, one of many outstanding members of the Lower Gwinnett community. They pretty much do or will speak to us about almost anything. They've been open, they've been transparent. Their property is also used as part of our trail system, and we're very grateful for that. So I think it'd be hard pressed for any community to have a better partner than Jansen. I just wanted to make sure everybody heard that in case there might be somebody out there in the public or something that didn't already know it. I didn't want to assume anything, but they're very good neighbors from Lower Gwinnett. Thank you.
John Walco, attorney for Jansen, thank you very much. I want to thank you and the board for your approval tonight. And Jim Lilly, the senior site manager, and Rodney McKenna, the senior director of projects, was also, I saw in one of my little Zoom boxes, and they're here, along with Kevin Sager from Gilmore. And again, we just wanted to extend our offer of thanks and to let the board know that we're hoping as soon as this COVID is over, that we'd love to have you all onto the site for a tour, to see some of the exciting things that are going on there, for the new members that aren't familiar with the site, to have you on. That Johnson Johnson loves being part of the community, and we're excited to work with you in the future on the site and the improvements on McKean Road. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent.
Thank you. You're also doing some tremendous research there that I read about occasionally. And it mentions Spring House where this research is being done. So I get a little kick in my step every time I read something about it. But yes, you're a great neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to second everything that was said and thank Rodney and I. We go back, I think, longer than anybody on that site. And thank you, Rodney, for always being true to Lower Gwinnett. And we've always had a personal partnership there to make everything what it is today. I want to thank you for your professional friendship over the years.
Thanks, Ed. Likewise to you too, and I enjoy the partnership that we've had over the years. So thanks a lot. We love doing business with you guys.
Thank you. Next, I am on the agenda is appointment of an interim tax collector. For those that are new or didn't attend the prior meetings, Betty Lou Yost is resigning as the tax collector. Betty's been the tax collector, I want to say, for 30 years. Somebody might have a better number than that. She's widely respected in the community. You can talk to her about just about anything, and she's very, very exact, very precise with her accounting. She knows, I would say, many, if not most, of the members of the community through the years that stop over her office over here. And so she's decided it's time for her to turn in her green eye shades and move on to other things. So to that end, we, the township advertised for an appointment to an interim tax collector. Now, interim tax collector is exactly that. This is an elected position as tax collector. And the next election will be in 2021, November. So between now and then, we have to have a tax collector. So we advertised for a tax collector, and we got some applicants, and the board has interviewed all the applicants. So at this point, I'd like to throw it open to the floor, see the board of supervisors if they have any comments about the three candidates that would like to share.
Just a point of order. Mark, do we need to accept her resignation first?
Yes. Okay, all right, so.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Betty Lou Yost as our current tax collector.
Right. Well, if we didn't accept it, it would expire anyway. Isn't that right, Neil?
After a specific time period, 45 days, it's deemed to be accepted, the resignation.
Okay. So can I have a motion to accept her resignation? Danielle, would you like to make that motion?
I'd make a motion to accept the resignation of Betty Lou Yost.
Okay. Well, I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. So Betty Lou is officially resigned. So when we go back to the interim tax collector, we've all had a chance to think about it, interview the candidates. And I would ask if anybody would like to share their thoughts.
Yes. I'd like to nominate Linda Sax. And also, she'll be assisted by Bernadette Doperty, who've both been trained over the last six to eight weeks by Betty Lou to take over the tax collector roles for the next 15 months until, as Mark, our chairman, stated, the election of November 2021. Now, let it be known that Betty Lou Yost has been an elected official in Lower Gwinnett for 35 years. She will, she has one year left. She is passing, she is resigning because of health reasons. I can tell you, Republicans and Democrats have looked up to this lady for advice as for where to go when they have a problem. I'm happy to say that some very established Democratic committee people in the meadows where I live speaks very highly of Betty Lou. I haven't heard a negative about Betty Lou. When people go in and have a question or comment, she presses, she sends them in the right direction, even with a phone number, and tries to solve their problems. She wasn't just elected for 35 years, but she was the number one vote getter every year. I think this board should honor her recommendation and appoint Linda Sax, being assisted by Bernadette Doperty, who Linda has available to her an office with public parking and handicap parking with footsteps away from the Spring House post office. Linda Sax has worked for Lower Gwinnett Township in the past with an impeccable record. It was her decision to leave Lower Gwinnett to assist her husband in business. So without further ado, I am putting forward Linda Sax, again, assisted by Betty Lou, who has, again, the parking, the walking distance to the post office at Spring House, an impeccable record herself with Lower Gwinnett. And that's my motion to the board.
Thank you, Ed. Are there any other comments from the supervisors?
Well, I'd like to second that motion and preface it with my deepest thanks and regards to Betty Lou Yost. She is a township gem, maybe even a township legacy here locally, and also well-known and well-regarded in the municipal tax world. Betty is not resigning entirely voluntarily. Her health has been failing, and I think she saw the writing on the wall back in July when she reached out to Linda Sax, a Lower Gwinnett resident, to help her with her duties. And also Bernadette Doperty, the former tax collector down in Ambler. She instigated really succession planning for the purposes of the integrity of the office, for the benefit of this township, for the benefit of the residents, and really handed us, the supervisors, a nice package to allow for seamless transition in the interim tax collector position. They have been trained and schooled by Betty Lou. They know what they're doing. They've been reconciling the books. They work well together. As Supervisor Brandt mentioned, Linda Sax has the perfect space for residents to come and pay their taxes. There's plenty of parking. It's handicap accessible. It's right on Bethlehem Pike. Those of you who pay your taxes at Betty Lou's, you know how convenient it is and how pleasant it has been. And we've been spoiled by her in so many ways as Lower Gwinnett taxpayers. And this succession plan that she put together for us out of respect for her community is a gift to us. And I really think it's in our best interest as a board and as a township to accept her recommendation of Linda Sax because not only has she earned our respect, she deserves our deference to her recommendation. And I really think it would be, it would be the right thing to follow her recommendation, which is very worthy. And, you know, it's for 15 months. And then in the election, the citizens can decide ultimately who would be tax collector in November of 2021. So I second the motion to appoint Linda Sax as interim tax collector.
Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Brandt.
I would like to add also that, being on vacation, I did not have an opportunity to interview the two other applicants as of yesterday. But I think it's very important to note that the supervisors, all the supervisors, appreciate the effort made by those that did apply for this remaining 15 months. And of course, from what I heard, they're qualified people. But what my motion has been, and they would probably recognize, that after 35 years, this is at least what the township supervisors can do to say thank you to Betty Lou Yost. And that's all I had to add, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. Are there any other comments from any of the supervisors?
I have comments. I, along with my other supervisors, want to thank all of the people who took the time to apply and show interest in the tax collector position. Having participated in the interviews of all three candidates, I think our position as elected supervisors is to devalue everybody equally and take into account all of the years of service that Betty Lou has provided to the township, which we're all grateful for. But in hearing the qualification of all of the candidates, it's in my opinion that one stood out leaps and bounds beyond the other as far as her experience, her tenacity, her desire to do the job, her ability through her work experience to do the job. So based upon that, which is the factors that I took into account, I would like to make a motion to recommend Natalie Cormier for the interim tax collector position.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from supervisors? Okay. Well, I was also present at all three interviews, participated in the interviews. The third candidate was Diane Morgan. We were lucky to get three candidates that were so interested. Diane's more of the CFO type in speaking with her. Natalie is a roll-up-your-sleeves, sharpen-your-pencil accounting type. And Linda's been doing that type of work as well through her career. So we had three separate candidates, all with strengths, all with weaknesses. My only concern, well, I had a couple of concerns, right? So everybody's comment about Betty Lou is absolutely correct. Great asset to the community, knows what she's doing. And, you know, I would say, most people, certainly me, love her. She's just a heck of a person, and I wish her well. But we have to look at the qualifications for the job. All three were qualified. And we also have to take a look at the level of effort in availability. So today, I got the final numbers from our township manager concerning how many accounts that Lower Gwinnett Township, a tax assessor, manages. And by accounts, every municipality has a tax collector elected office. I would say most in the state of Pennsylvania. However, Betty Lou's position was also as the tax collector for the Wizahickin School District, which encompasses Lower Gwinnett and Ambler and Whipang. So that's a separate action. So there are 5,000 accounts in Lower Gwinnett. Whipang's about double the size, so I would guess it's close to 8,000 accounts and about 2,500 accounts for Ambler. And Betty Lou's office also did the accounting for the county for Lower Gwinnett, for sure. And I don't know, Craig, did she have the county accounting for any of the other townships or only Lower Gwinnett?
No, just Lower Gwinnett.
Yeah. So when you add all of those accounts up, your sum is around 20,000, give or take. That's a lot of time. That's a lot of effort you're going to have to extend, not just around tax season, but, you know, during the course of the year. It's a big effort. And based on that, I felt that the bandwidth issue, that I'm going to characterize it as, I thought Linda had a better bandwidth, and she had some training with Betty Lou, which I also thought was very valuable, doing turnover. So I've had situations where I've come into the office and taken over people's jobs without training and with training. And I can tell you, it works much better when you have some training under your belt. So we have a nomination for Linda and a nomination for Natalie. Do we have a second for Natalie?
Mark, I haven't voiced an opinion yet.
Okay.
I'd just like to say, the reason I have been silent, just listening to the other folks give their opinion, I'm very torn. I'd like to thank the applicants that came in to interview with us, and I really appreciate their interest and time. And my main concern is that we have somebody that there's a seamless transition in this position. I think that when we have the next election, we can, you know, decide then on either a new candidate or somebody that's already occupying the office. But I think because it's sort of an urgent situation that we get somebody in place, perhaps the benefit of already being in the position outweighs the actual, maybe, qualifications of the other candidates. So. So I'd just like to, you know, echo what I guess Kathleen and Ed have said, that it would be good to, to continue with somebody who has already been trained in the position for the time being.
Okay. Thank you for your words. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor of appointing Linda Sacks as the tax collector, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
The ayes have it. Linda is our new tax collector, interim tax collector. Thank you, everybody, for your time on this. I know we spent a lot of time talking about it, thinking about it, interviewing, and we had to get this done right away. So it was, you know, it was certainly an effort getting this all done, and I appreciate it. Trash bid. Craig, could you fill us in on the, how we did on the trash bids? Where we stand at the moment?
Yes, we went out for a trash bid, for a three-year trash bid. We opened the bids on September 16th. We had three bidders, JP Mascara, Republic Services, and Waste Management. All the bids were acceptable. The low bid came in for Republic Services for a three-year bid contract of $2,784,726. That was the low bid. So for authorization to approve that bid tonight.
Okay. This is substantially less than Waste Management's bid. So I think that's, competition is good. And just so everybody knows, Waste Management's bid from five years ago was less than its previous contract as well. So the price for this service, trash hauling, has gone down. And it's a good thing, I think, for the residents of Lower Gwinnett. Is there any discussion for any of the members of the board of supervisors on this?
I just wanted to, not necessarily discussion, but just for the public's sake, make everyone aware that it's for virtually the same service that we're currently receiving, receiving twice a week trash hauling, one day bulk pickup. And they are providing us, you know, everyone that bid is going to be providing us bins. So it's essentially for the same exact service, these are the bids.
Are there any comments from the audience, Craig?
There is a hand raised. Deborah Schaefer. I just.
Yeah. I have a question. Does this also include recycling?
Yes.
And what about bulk items? Waste Management says that they will take one big item away per week without a charge.
Correct. This is the same exact contract that was out there, that has been out there for 15 years. There was basically no change in it, other than we had to go out to bid. The contract ended.
Okay. And same, same volume containers?
Correct.
Good, thank you.
Craig?
Yes.
Ed Brandt here.
Yes.
Republic is not requiring a call in advance on bulk pickup? In their contract? Dealing with them at the condominium location that I manage across from the high school, they do require a call. They'll pick it up at no charge, but they're, it's something, even if they're approved, that we should, we should make sure that's clear with them. The other thing is, is I don't know if we had a coordinator from Waste Management over these last 15 to 20 years, but I hope we would have a one-source office to call, a person in charge of our contract, because Republic has a huge office in King of Prussia and one up in Telford. So I would recommend, if and when this is approved tonight, that those two things be clarified.
Yes, we'll have a contact directly with, with Republic Services. And the bulk items, I believe, they will have to call in advance for any bulk item that's out there, but we can confirm that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments from any member of the audience?
I see Deborah Schaefer again. Let me, I don't know if it.
No, you answered my question, so you can.
All right. I'm going to lower your hand.
Okay.
Let me just check. Nothing on the chat.
Okay.
No, nothing I can.
We're good. All right. Can I have a motion to accept the 2020 to 2023 trash bid from Republic?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is the approval of the proposed Act 101 violation as requested by Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission. So Ed Brandt, I want to start with you on this, if that would be okay. Could you explain to the audience who, who or what the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission is, since you're on that board?
Well, yes, I'd be glad to. Since 1995, there, when Lower, when Montgomery County decided to get involved financially with a trash hauling manufacturer and disposal company out of France, down outside of Concha Hocken, they required certain municipalities in Montgomery County to bring all their trash there. The northern section of the county was not included. So in turn, in 1995, the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission became in existence. And there were 11 municipalities involved. Montgomery Township, North Wales, Lower Gwinnett. We have Ambler, which was at it. We have Telford, Sodderton, Lower Providence, Tullamensun. And I was president for the last 20 years. As of the end of last year, I resigned. And the Lower Gwinnett representative is our assistant township manager, who happens to live up that way. And she could probably fill you in better than I can on this violation request that was given to the board. So after 25 years being on the board and 20 as chairperson, I resigned. So I think she can give us a better answer to your question, Mark.
That's okay. I just wanted to, wanted to make sure that, you know, you had an opportunity to speak on this, because you've been, you've been on that board for so many years. And it's done a lot of great things. It's one of those boards that operate in silence for the most part. And I know you were the chair for some time. Neil Stein, have you had an opportunity to review the proposed violations of Act 101? Could you explain to the, to the audience and to the supervisors exactly what this purports to do?
Act 101 delegates to the commission the right to enforce violations and to promulgate rules and regulations that govern enforcement actions. The proposed enforcement regulations were reviewed by me and the memo distributed with my concerns about those regulations. Subsequently, the commission revised its proposed regulations. Some of my comments were addressed, others were not. But essentially, the regulations govern what happens in the event of a first offense, the enforcement of which is really delegated to the municipality. And then what happens when there's a second defense, the enforcement of which is delegated principally to the commission and possibly to DEP. There are evidentiary standards that are included within the regulations. And my understanding is that the commission is looking for all its municipalities to approve these regulations prior to the end of September.
Mark, if I can add something?
Sure.
We have worked with the DEP over all these years, and we do a calculation, the Northern Montgomery County, of all the haulers. And they are required to tell us, give us account on the recyclables. We submit those numbers by May to DEP. And usually by the fall, we get a rebate check from the state because they have implemented charges to the haulers. I am happy to say those rebate checks usually run anywhere from $350,000 to $400,000, sometimes up to $500,000. That money is divvied up to each municipality based on the reporting records that we submit through our haulers to the municipalities. And our chairman, Craig, is a very happy man when he gets that check every year, because it's designated, doesn't have a designation to it. It's, it's found money that he could implement in Lower Gwinnett where he sees fit. Of course, myself, over the years, have had some recommendation. But Craig is usually very happy and in a good mood when he receives that check made out to Lower Gwinnett Township with no strings attached. So I just wanted to fill the board members in that we do monitor the recyclables in each township. Thank you.
You're welcome. And it's always nice to get a check in the mail, right? So, and actually cash it. So Neil, does Act 101 require language of the type that's in this resolution?
This language is premised in part on Act 101 and in part based on what the commission thinks is appropriate under the circumstances.
So are we, is, does Act 101 require that we have this enforcement mechanism for violations?
Yes, it does.
Does, as I read this, violations are criminal acts. Is that correct? Or did I get that wrong?
Potentially, not necessarily. There are civil consequences as well.
So when I read through this, I was, I was trying to come up with some scenarios. One of the scenarios was if I co-mingle my trash. In other words, I got trash out at the curb and my leaf bag breaks and I throw all the leaves into the mixed recyclables. That's a violation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and I could be charged criminally for doing that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The manpower in any municipality to oversee that, Mark, is, would be substantial.
Oh, I would. I have no doubt.
I would suggest, Mark, that maybe Jamie, who took over for me this year, may have something to add also, in fairness to her. And Jamie has been representing Lower Gwinnett at these meetings.
Okay. Good point, Ed. Jamie, can you contribute to this at all? Write any clarity here?
The only thing, I mean, this was kind of being worked on before I joined. But the only thing is that it's not really proposing anything that isn't already currently in the ordinance and agreed to by our participation in the intergovernmental agreement with the Northern Montgomery Recycling Commission. One of the solicitor for the recycling commission noted that one of the issues was the commission, that the township would just send the violations to the commissions for their handling. And that could potentially have the commissions spend a lot of money if it's not going to be enforced by the municipality itself. So this was one way to, I guess, these were things that the commission had talked about prior to me being there, that they wanted to see put in place with the proposed new enforcement measures that you're seeing in this resolution. But you already, it's already in your ordinance. I mean, there's already first offenses, second offenses.
Lower Gwinnett has an ordinance for first and second offense of co-mingling the trash?
Yeah, you have the Northern Montgomery Recycling Ordinance.
Yeah. It was adopted in whole, right?
Years ago, Mark.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the municipalities had to agree to that if they were going to be part of this recycling commission. So I would make a motion to approve this proposed violation request. It's an update, as I understand it. And it's proven, it's proven successful on us when it's reported to us from residents throughout the commission area of violations.
Okay. So Neil, I'm going to put you on the spot again.
Sure.
What are your thoughts on this? Is this, is this something that you think Lower Gwinnett could live with? Or am I just being too critical when I, when I read it over?
Well, first and foremost, I think that having an enforcement mechanism for recycling violations is important. Without an enforcement mechanism, there's no incentive for anyone to follow those regulations. Number two, I feel a little bit better, because in the case of a first offense, it used to say that the commission could really act on its own in terms of enforcement. It's now been changed to say the commission must consult with the municipality in which the violation occurs before any enforcement action is taken. Obviously, the township may not want to be as heavy-handed as the commission in dealing with a violation. And this gives the township a seat at the table, if you will, before enforcement action is taken.
Okay. All right. So does any of the supervisors have any comments or thoughts?
I have a couple of questions. With the understanding that we already were adopting the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission's standards as it related to violations, is this, outside of the idea that what Neil just specified, that we have clear and identified ramifications for violating it, or violating any, any parts of it? Is, do we, I mean, Mr. Brandt kind of spoke to the fact that we don't have the manpower or the bandwidth to actually enforce this. So are we dependent upon neighbors? Are we dependent upon, and I'm speaking more for the individual resident, as opposed to the haulers or the businesses? Who is primarily reporting these individuals? Is their word taken? Is there documentation of it? How, how would mechanics be used retaliatory against neighbors not getting along with other neighbors? That's really what my concern is, making accusations that they're not recycling things that should be recycled, vice versa.
No, if I may, Danielle, it's not going after necessarily the individual. It's going after the hauler that is taking recyclables and throwing them in with the regular trash so that they don't have to go back a second time with another truck to pick up the recyclables. That happens quite often in all the municipalities named whereby people or companies are trying to decrease the cost of collection. And sometimes, instead of sending out the recycling truck once a week, we've had reports of people putting out the recyclables the same day when the solid waste is put out. And the truck goes by for the solid waste and everything disappears. That's the type of violations we're looking for, is the haulers, not the individual people segregating their trash versus recyclables.
So my question then lends itself to the last whereas, where it identifies the establishment of formal procedures for the enforcement against violations by haulers, businesses, and residents of member municipalities. So is it inappropriate to have residents there?
No, it's, when we get a report like that, we, in the past, the authority, recycling authority, would send a letter to the hauler mentioning to them that an offense has been reported and to get an official report from them and then act accordingly. So this is also asking for the local municipalities, as I understand it, to work with us in reference to when they sign a contract, as we just announced today with Republic, that if there's a violation of recyclables versus solid waste, then the township would also work with the Northern Montgomery County Recycling Commission to go after the hauler.
I'm sorry, I guess that's why I'm questioning, why is that last whereas including the names of residents? It says against residents, municipalities, and haulers and businesses of a member municipalities. So just for clarification, and maybe Neil can clarify this, is this really only addressing haulers and businesses who aren't appropriately recycling items that should and could be recycled, not necessarily residents and can't be used against residents of our municipality?
It applies with equal force to residents, businesses, and haulers.
So my question is, what, what steps could we or should we take to ensure that this is, I mean, I read under recommendation of documentation, it's talking about pictures and witness statements and photographs. And so are we arming our neighbors who may not get along to then take undue action against their neighbors to, to highlight the fact that they might not be recycling appropriately? And if so, how can we hold them to the standard of businesses and haulers without adequate education?
If I may, Danielle, this is, usually the hauler goes back to the recycling commission and in this case, maybe the township. And they, they asked, well, where did the violation occur? Because they use different trucks in different areas, they like to get a pinpoint time of where the violation was so they could correct. There are employees that may not be properly educated from that standpoint. This is not additional work.
Mr. Brandt, what I'm talking about is this, this resolution actually says that those same violations can be held up against residents, the same way you're talking about comminguing with a hauler. So my, my only point of clarification is if we're going to hold individual residents to the same criteria than a hauler who does this professionally all day long and/or business who should be adequately educated as to what they can and can't recycle and should recycle, what kind of education are we providing to our residents to ensure that they do not subject themselves unknowingly to a defense?
Well, it's a, it's a good question, Danielle. I don't have the ordinance in front of me. Again, I'm away on vacation. I didn't pick that up. Thank you for picking it up. It's a, it's a question that maybe we, before we pass this, that our solicitor can talk to the solicitor, which is Whistler Pearlstein, I believe, for the Northern Montgomery County, to give you the answer that would satisfy you on that, but.
I just, I just feel like before we start to implement sanctions on our residents, we need to arm them with all the education. And I know that the county came out back in February, right before COVID took place, and gave a very educational informational session that the EAC sponsored around what you can and you can't recycle. And it was eye-opening, certain things that you would think you could recycle, you could, and certain things you could not. But that room was not packed enough to make me feel that every resident is adequately educated. And before we would pass something where we're willing to sanction them in any way, we should ensure that there's some kind of mitigating factor where they can be educated or, or something along those lines, in my opinion.
Yes, but if I may, Danielle, over the last 25 years, we have implemented magnets to go on refrigerators for, to educate residents as for what can be recycled, what cannot. So we have made an attempt, the association. I think you're, you're pulling something out of these, this ordinance or proposed act that hasn't, needs a legitimate answer to. But I can tell you, over the last 25 years, all the municipalities, as I mentioned to you earlier, Ambler, Montgomery, and so forth, we have sent out and tried to educate residents as for what is recyclables and what is not. Sometimes people just ignore it anyway. But if, if need be, we can table that, this request for this month and have Neil talk to our people and.
I mean, the only remedy that I see, or the remedy that I would see would be, prior to you actually getting offense or you get a notice and all of that, nowhere does any of the offenses indicate that you receive adequate training. And the county recycling program, I know, provides that training. So, I mean, just the addition of that, I think, would satisfy the fact that if you aren't aware, you can be made aware and we can move forward, but I would.
The county, the county recycling commission has commended the Northern Recycle Commission more than, than ever because we're so far ahead of them, they're behind. So, but to answer your question, I'm not opposed to having Neil talk to Whistler Pearlstein to answer your question, but, and it's, you're, you're making a legitimate question. I'm not denying that.
I could just add one thing. The, the enforcement and penalties that are currently in the code have always, they, they're for businesses, individuals, that's not changing. That, that's always been under the requirement because that's what Act 101, that's what we have to do to be compliant with Act 101. We also, to be compliant with Act 101, we have to provide educational information on recycling, which we do in every newsletter. We have to report, we have to have an article in every newsletter regarding recycling. And the commission provides an article for all the member municipalities that is run. And the other thing with the waste hauler contract, there is information in that, in that contract language where they too have to provide the individual homeowners information on recycling. And all of that is a requirement under Act 101, which we, we are currently doing.
Our website has a page for recycling and trash telling you what exactly has to be recycled, what should not be recycled, and it lists everything on the page. So that is the, the mechanism that we would use to educate the residents to recycle, on how to recycle as well.
Jamie and Ed, for practical purposes, has the, have individuals been fined or subject to prosecution over the last 20 years? I think it's good to have that in the, in the document because, of course, we don't want individuals not complying with our, with our recycling rules. But, you know, I agree with Danielle, we, we need to be careful and make sure it's not, it's not an abusive situation with respect to fines or whatever against individuals.
I think what would. Over the last 45 years, Tessie, where it was brought to our attention of abuse from a particular homeowner, they were notified by their local municipality with a copy to the Northern Montgomery County Association. And in turn, that usually nips it at the bud when they know that people are watching. It's, what has happened is, and Danielle was standing up for the, for the residents, which is, she's elected to do and so am I and all of us. But there are people out there that just abuse the system, the rules and regulations. Because the haulers, when they go around with these recycling trucks, they have a certain area where they can take it and where they can dump it. And they are in turn penalized if they try to include non-recyclable merchandise. So it has to be, it has to start at the public area. And the Northern Montgomery County Commission notifies the local municipality, then a letter goes out to the resident. And usually that takes care of it. I am not aware of a fine ever been enforced against one particular neighbor or resident, I should say, on a violation like that, if anything. Usually the hauler, because the hauler in turn can be fined, they'll discontinue picking up from that resident. So the answer, I don't know if that answers your question, but we bend over backwards where the people in the county that we, that abuse the recycling solid waste, a differential.
So I just want to go back to Neil one more time here. So the township has a great deal of discretion here as to whether or not we choose to proceed with any type of citation, is that correct, Neil?
Some discretion, but not exclusive discretion. For example, this provides that should somebody witness a violation, they're to, they're to send notification to the township manager who decides what to do next. So that's the first level of discretion and determining whether or not there's sufficient evidence of a violation seems to fall within the responsibilities of the township manager, which is a tremendous amount of responsibility to determine whether a criminal violation may have occurred. This is interesting, it seems a little draconian to me. And in some places seems a little contrary to what I know about the Fourth Amendment and due process, but those are my own comments.
We as a township, could we establish, outside of the first offense and second offense, just additional steps that the township manager would take? Or is that not allowed?
Oh, that's allowed. We could do that.
And one, one of the things the, the attorney for, the solicitor for the commission had stated was that they could add a provision that a member municipality desiring to solely handle enforcement of a particular case may opt to do so at any time. And they can put that language into the resolution, they said, which I think would, you know, like Danielle was saying, it would give the municipality the opportunity to decide what type of, if any, they're going to take without the, without the involvement of the Northern Montgomery Recycling.
I like that.
I would like that as well. Because while I'm all for recycling and would like to encourage everyone to participate in it, kind of what Neil said, sanctioning somebody with a criminal charge without any kind of process or any kind of parameters, this makes me uneasy.
Okay, so, so Neil, could you work with Jamie, put that language in there, send it back to the solicitor for the recycling commission and get that changed so we can vote on it in our next meeting?
Very good.
Okay, thank you very much. Very, very good discussion. Next on the agenda is the 2021 Minimum Municipal Obligation. Do we have our actuary here today, Fred?
We do not.
Okay. Well, you, you're a good substitute.
Sure, be an actuary.
You could wear that hat tonight. Why don't you explain to everybody in the audience why we need a MMO and what it's all about?
Well, because we have pension plans for the non-uniform and uniform personnel on the, in the township. Every year, we have to have the actuary run the books, run the numbers, and tell us what our minimum municipal obligation is to satisfy the pension plans for the following year. So we have to file this with the state by September 30th. The September 30th of this year for next year. So in front of you is the numbers for next year for the police pension plan. The MMO, Minimum Municipal Obligation is $420,930. For the non-uniform pension plan, it's $177,229. For a total of $598,159. What we'll do is, if this is, we have to approve it, this is our obligation to the state that we are fulfilling our, the minimum amount of money to put into the pension plans. And then what we'll do is put this in the budget for next year to, to hit the obligation.
Okay. And our pension plan is fully funded, is that correct?
It is not fully funded, we're at about 93% between the two, between the two plans.
Are there any questions from any of the other supervisors? Are there any questions from members of the public?
I do not see anything.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the 2021 MMO obligation? Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion passes. Authorization to solicit bids for a communication consultant. Greg?
We'll pass this on to Jamie, she was handling this one.
Thanks, Jamie, thank you.
I had circulated in the board packet a draft RFP to request communication consultant services to assist the township in developing a communication strategy that will eventually end up with a, that same communication consultant will help us draft a future RFP, tell us what should be in it for the hiring of a future communications consultant, either by way of employee or contract.
Okay. Did members of the board have an opportunity to review the document, the solicitation bid?
Yes.
Communication consultant, okay. Does anybody have any questions about it? Okay. Are there any questions from members of the public?
Again, I'm not seeing any hands, nothing in the chat, nothing on the email.
Okay. Can I have a motion to authorize the solicit bids for communication consultant?
Still moved.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Authorization to sell excess equipment, is our new director present?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, could you fill us in? See online?
Yeah, it's two old police cars. The chief asked me to get them out of there. So we'd like to advertise them on municipal and put some money back in the coffers for equipment that we're not using anymore.
And could you tell us how old these two police vehicles are?
One's a 2013 and one's a 2008.
So you think we got our money's worth out of these cars?
I think with close to 100,000 miles on each, I think you got your money's worth out of them.
Okay, that's good news. Can you let us know when they when they sell? I'm assuming someone will buy these and get get back to us what the what the prices were that they bid on these?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Does there any questions from members of the board? Are there any questions from members of the public?
Seeing nothing.
Okay, can I have a motion to authorize the sale of these two police cars?
So much.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Next up on the agenda is public comments. These these comments can be questions, concerns, issues from members of the public for for items that weren't on the agenda or we didn't talk about. And if you have any comments, let's hear them.
You have one. Deborah Schaefer raised her hand.
Okay, Deborah.
Thank you. I'm going to speak for myself and for one other lower-guinea 1-3 resident that I heard from. I don't know that the Board of Supervisors is responsible for this, but there's a concern about this, the electronic sign that went up at Bethland Baptist Church. Personally, I think it's an eyesore. I'm not sure why it has to be electronic. And I don't, I don't think that it enhances the the look of lower-guinea. The comment that I got from someone who lives nearby, who passes it frequently, says it seems inappropriate, out of place. And this person feels like he's on the strip in Vegas when he's passing it. So I'm just, I'm just concerned about the precedent that it sets that the high school has an electronic sign, now the church has an electronic sign. And it concerns me that we're going the way of a township with lots or too many electronic signs. So I just wanted to go on record to share that sentiment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Ken still with us? Ken Amy?
Yes, yes.
Oh, there he is. I see you, Ken. Hey, Ken, can you give us some details about that sign and what the sign ordinance is about?
Yes, let me, let me give you the background, but also say that I'll, I will go out and take a look at it. It was just installed last week. I can't say I've taken a close look at it to see if it's functioning the way it was permitted and the way the ordinance requires. So before I, before I comment too much on it, I want to get a look at it. But the ordinance does permit electronic signs for certain uses, including churches and schools, if the zoning hearing board grants approval. So the church did go to the zoning hearing board and they were, there was a favorable decision from the zoning hearing board that allows that allowed them to put the sign in in accordance with the ordinance requirements. And again, before I, before I speak too much about it, I'd really like to get out there and take a look at it and see if it is functioning the way it was designed to.
Okay. Thank you very much, and you'll get back to us.
I'll get back to Craig and we'll make sure the word gets back to the board.
Thank you very much. And Craig, could you make sure that we follow up with Deborah? I want to make sure we don't, we we closed the loop on this, so so there's no open issues around the sign. Thank you.
Mark, I'd like to just reiterate and agree with what Deborah has said tonight. I was driving down Pineland Pike the other day, having no idea that there would be a sign there. And it caught my eye, of course, and it is, I feel it's very obtrusive and out of place on a residential, beautiful residential road, Pineland Pike. It is not serving a useful purpose there. And I'm very surprised that it was approved to go in there. It's, it's not an attractive sign.
Thank you. If I may make a suggestion, Chairman Gray, that if Neil could comment to Tessie and also the resident, that the zoning hearing board stands alone away from the Board of Supervisors. And if there's an appeal on something that they rule, it has to go through the quarter common pleas in Montgomery County. A lot of residents aren't aware that the ZHB is standalone away from the Board of Supervisors. So just a suggestion, if Neil wishes not to, or you don't agree with that, then that's fine.
No, I can say that the members of the zoning hearing board are appointed by the Board of Supervisors. However, it is a quasi judicial body, so it operates differently than the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors can oppose an application at the zoning hearing board if it so desires. And the supervisors can appeal a decision of the zoning hearing board if it so desires. But Ed is correct in saying that it does stand alone as a quasi judicial authority.
Thanks, Neil. I would say most people don't realize that.
No.
Based on the conversations I've been in the past. But but Deborah, we're going to look into this and we'll get back to you with some answers. Craig, is there anybody else in the audience who?
I did receive a, an email from Linda Sacks. She wanted to say thank you to all the supervisors for their careful consideration and confidence in her. And she greatly accepts their appointment as interim tax collector for Lower Guinnett Township. And also thank you for the glowing tribute to Betty Lou Yost. So put that on back.
So it's always nice to get a compliment. So is that it, Craig, in terms of public comments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Managers report, Craig, do you have anything?
The one thing was sent over today, but it sounds like maybe Amber Borough Water will be already out there tomorrow, Wednesday, September 23rd. Amber Borough Water Department will be installing a new street valve located at North Spring Garden Street and Brookside Avenue. In order to do, complete the work, they will need to temporarily shut off the water. The water will be turned off at 9:00 AM and anticipate it could be off for up to six hours to replace this valve.
Okay.
That was, then that was sent out, that was on our website and also sent out to the the email alerts for that. That's it. The EMS Subcommittee met last week and asked for a presentation or a proposal from a recommendation from the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company to possibly look at a design for a firehouse. I spoke with the gentleman last week, asked him for a proposal from that. I received it about four o'clock today, so that is not on the agenda. I was unable to review it and give any recommendations for that. So but I will be sending that out to the Subcommittee and then to the full board if the Subcommittee agrees with that.
Okay, all right, thank you. And is that it for your report?
That's it, yes.
Okay, thank you. And Danielle, thank you for bringing to the, our attention, the water main shut off. If you haven't, hadn't jumped in, we probably would have found out about it later, but sooner is better than than later, certainly. So thank you for that. Supervisors' comments, Mr. Brandt, would you have anything to say?
Yes, two things. I'd like Neil, our attorney, to review the letter again from the borough of Ambler dated September 17th, especially the second paragraph, where they insinuate that due to an overlay project by our roads department caused some valves to be obliterated and not found. And I want to make sure that from a legal standpoint, that Lower Guinnett will be protected in some way, shape or form, either by the contractor or the or the township in some way, shape or form. It just, it almost accuses us of covering our subcontractor, covering the valve boxes. And I'd just like to have Neil review that and respond to us. That's one request. That's the request. The other thing is just a comment. I want to thank the four supervisors that voted in favor of the motion that was made for Linda Sacks taking over on a temporary basis until next year's election and paying tribute to Betty Lou Yost for all those years and also for her educating her substitutes for that period of time. That's all I have to say, Mr. Manager, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brandt. You just gave me a promotion to manager, but I'm okay with that.
I'm sorry, I said manager, chairman, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
If you want the manager's position.
Yeah, I don't think Craig's in any mood to leave.
No, no.
Yeah, I think he's good. So Kath, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Just a quick one, thank you. You all heard my comments regarding Betty Lou Yost. She really did give a lot to our township, and I encourage anybody to contact her, either via email, a note in the mail, a phone call, a message, just thanking her for her service and wishing her the best. Thank you.
Tessie?
I'd just like to, once again, now that we're all talking about the new tax collector, I'd like to thank all the candidates who took time in the interest to come in and be interviewed. And I'd also like to thank the fellow supervisors for doing what I think was a nice job of deliberating and determining who we feel is the best fit for the position right now, with the idea in mind that in a year and a half, we'll have the opportunity to, as a township, to vote on perhaps another candidate. But I would also like to echo the previous comments and thank Betty Lou for all of her many years of service to the township. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle? You're on mute.
Sorry, a few things. Again, I want to echo some of the previous comments made. I want to thank Betty Lou for her years of service. Thank all of the the residents who took the time out to volunteer and put their names in the ring to help us fill a vacancy that we weren't anticipating, but much, you know, we needed to fill as soon as possible. I thank you for all of the time that they took to do that. Additionally, I wanted to just kind of speak to some of the residents that live in my area who have endured countless loss of water over the past few weeks. I'm right here with you enduring that. It is unfortunate that it is not something that we as a township can completely control. Our water does come from Ambler Borough. I know that I personally tried to communicate on Facebook, as well as the township does, as soon as we're aware that something is going to happen. I know that a few hours ago, water was leaking from Knight Road in Houston. I'm not sure if the water has been turned off. But I know that we've endured at least nine within the past year water stoppages and some that have gone on, most recently more than 48 hours, which is a hardship, especially in a pandemic, when sanitation is key and everybody might not be going to the grocery stores regularly in person as they would traditionally. So I can appreciate what we've had to endure. I know that me and Mark took time to communicate some of those frustrations to the Amber Borough at their latest borough meeting and just to kind of share some of the potentially unnecessary monies that we as a township may have wasted by milling and paving roads that then had to be tore up to repair mains that are 70 years or more old. So I just wanted to ensure that everyone in the township knew that that is not something that we are unaware of, that we are trying to mitigate it, but our hands are tied to some degree is because we are beholden to Ambler and their water authority to provide us water. But we're doing our best to try and find a solution. In addition, I wanted to congratulate our neighbors in Wood Payne Township for their passing of a Human Rights Commission and a discrimination ordinance. It's a big feat, and I'm glad to see that the residents in Wood Payne Township now have the protections of an ordinance to ensure that everyone is treated equally in our township. So I wanted to extend that congratulation to them. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle, for that. Yes, Danielle and I have spoken with members of the of the borough concerning the waters. This is a big deal, not having water. It's like anything else. When you don't have it, then you realize how important it is. It is a, it is a big deal. We are addressing it. I've got Neil, we as a board, I've got Neil Stein on the, on the, on the hook here as well, to try to get some of these things resolved. When you, when you don't have water to, you know, cook with or, you know, use your bathroom with, it's a, it's a problem. It's a big problem. Craig, given that it looks like we're out of water again, can we contact Ambler as soon as you can to try to make sure that there's water available, drinking water in some capacity? And if we need the water tank from North Wales Water Authority again, because this sounds like it could be more than just a couple hours, look into that again and see if we can get, get their water tank if we need it. I'm going to leave that up to you. But the residents where Danielle lived, they need to, they need to have water. And who knows how long they're going to be out again? It's not a good situation. A lot has been said about Betty Lou. I'm going to miss her. I love her. She's been a source of, you know, stability, a source of ideas and ways to look at things. And, you know, I'm going to miss her. She's my neighbor. I used to walk over there. She's short distance away. And, you know, we didn't get a chance to talk as much as I would like because we're, you know, we're both busy people. But she's just one heck of a person, and I'm, I will miss her and I'm sure everybody else will. And wherever she winds up, I hope her, I hope she does well and wish her well. Having said that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Have a good one.
You too.